All over time.
I came in and Carol was watching basketball and I thought, I said,
Kelly?
Different here, right?
You just couldn't find it. All right, I'd like to welcome our visitors this evening, both those here in chamber and all both and online. I now call to order the March 17, 2022 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Becker.
Here.
Alderman Schuman.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Moros.
Here.
Alderman Osteen.
Here.
Mayor Alvery.
Here. All right, we do have a quorum and under Mayor's Communication, I really don't have anything, but this is, this is the day when everyone who is not Irish has a little bit of Irish that comes out in them. So Happy St. Patty's Day to everyone. Now we move on to Citizens Communication. This is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the Mayor and Board on any topic that is not a public hearing, and there are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Visitors attending via online will be on listen-only mode. Any questions or comments for the Mayor and Board may be sent to the City Clerk at t b e r r e t h at osagebeach.org no later than 10:00 a.m. on the Board Meeting Day, which is the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the Citizens Communication section of the agenda. The Board of Alderman will not take action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will it respond to any questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The Mayor and Board of Alderman welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here in person who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Our first item of business is the approval of the Consent Agenda. If the Board desires, the Consent Agenda may be approved by a single motion. Tonight's agenda consists of the minutes of the March 3, 2022 Board of Alderman Meeting, the March 17, 2022 Bill's List, and a new liquor license, Macadoodles, at 6050 Crossing Drive. Alderman Moros, is the liquor license in order?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are there any questions, comments, or proposed revisions to the Consent Agenda? If none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Moros. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda is approved. Our first item of unfinished business, request a second reading by title only of Ordinance Number 22 dot 06, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Adopting an Amendment to the Zoning Map of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri by Rezoning 14 Acres as Described in Rezoning Case Number 417. You should have already received a copy of an ordinance change found on Page 3. The first reading was approved at the March 3 meeting. Are there any comments from the City Planner?
Yes, thank you. As you received in your email, hopefully, a addition to Exhibit B, which would be a completion date for Beach Drive. And the reasoning behind this is, I had a conversation with the applicants Friday of last week, and they do hold out a little bit of hope that they might be able to have a soft opening at the end of this summer, and so they can get some operation stuff, do it a little, do some of those things. And typically what happens is, is any of the requirements that go along with something like this would need to be complete prior to opening that portion of the new facility. In this particular case, we've got a couple of issues. One, the engineers are backlogged somewhere between 12 and 15 weeks to start the project, the design. Two, is that even if they were to get done early and start the project, the project would take place during the season, which is, quite candidly, just not something that we want to do. As you all know, I am one of the proponents for not doing projects if at all possible, especially if they are commercial feeder, commercial collectors, like this particular situation. So in that conversation, we decided to push that back for the street only, okay? All of the interior requirements as far as parking lots, parking drives, all of those things will need to be completed before they open. However, the road itself would then need to be completed by March 1 of 2023. And what this does is it allows the off-season between when Backwater Jacks closes for the season and then reopens the first or second week of March, the road would then be completed by the time that they reopen the first or second week of March, heading into next season. So with that being the case, I'm bringing this to you to recommend that we approve it with that addition of that date. I did speak to the applicant about that date, and they were very happy with being able to get that done by that time and believe that they can get it done.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the Board?
I guess I have one.
Yes, Alderman Ross.
So Carol, I guess I would ask, I think it's a great idea that we give them some time to get the street done right. If, for whatever reason, and I have no reason to believe it would happen, but if they didn't get it done by that date, what recourse do we have?
Well, it would be one of those things that we would bring back, kind of like any other thing. If, if there's definite work that has been done, and because of a bad winter, they weren't able to get to it or something like that, we can extend that date within reason. Or if it's just a clear situation where they haven't been making the effort, the Board can then revoke the E overlay. And, you know, we'd go through that process. I do not, just like you believe that that will be the case. And, you know, this is just something that we can do, both to help with the fact that engineering is so difficult to, to get going. Our guys are so busy these days, and this is just something I think that would remedy the situation.
Very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the second reading as amended?
Motion to approve.
All right. Alderman Osteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, roll call, please.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Becker?
Yes.
Alderman Moros?
Yes.
Alderman Schuman?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
All right, the second reading passes. Our final unfinished item this evening, request a second reading by title only of Ordinance Number 22 dot 10, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Authorizing the City Administrator to Accept the Municipal Equipment Company, Inc. Service Agreement to Perform Three-Phase Lift Station Assessment Inspections for Specific Stations Located as Listed in Said Agreement for an Amount Not to Exceed $168,960. Are there any additional comments from Public Works Manager?
No, no further comments. Again, this is, as you described, the, this would, this proposal would have the 88 largest lift stations in the city inspected, all of them three-phase, including 187 pumps of our largest pumps pulled and inspected, and I recommend approval. This, this could start upon approval, could start as early as next week if approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the Board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Schuman, do I have a second? Alderman Ross? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Roll call.
Alderman Schuman?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Becker? Alderman Moros?
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. We move on now to new business. Our first item of new business is requesting both a first and second reading of Bill Number 22 dash 11, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by Creating a New Section 109 dot 1D within Section 500 dot 020, Eliminating the Inspection Fee for Repair or Replacement of Water Heaters and HVAC Systems, Rebating Any Fees Previously Paid Therefore, and Requesting a Report to the Board of Alderman About the Time Spent on Courtesy Inspections for These Systems Within One Year. Building Official, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the Board. This is a request to amend our current municipal code, which currently establishes the minimum building permit fees at $40 for residential and 120 for commercial. The proposed amendment provides an exception to the building permit fees for the replacement of water heaters and heating, ventilation, and air conditioning or HVAC systems whereby the fee for these permits would be set to $0. Included in the amendment is my recommendation that any fees previously collected in 2021 or 2022 for water heater or HVAC replacement permits, which is actually to date, we may have issued eight, that those fees be rebated back to the permit holder. Additionally, the ordinance has been structured such that the Building Department will have 12 months to collect permitting and inspection data related to these permits and report that back to you at the first meeting in May of 2023. Building Department does recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Yes, Alderman Osteen?
Actually, I have a story and some comments to give from personal experience. I woke up on the morning of Thursday, February 23 with no hot water. It was my assumption that I needed to have a lower element replaced. And if you remember correctly, that Thursday, we had our last ice and snowstorm. After several calls, I managed to get a company to come out after hours to basically what I thought was replacing the hot water heater element, the lower element. Once again, ice and snowstorm. Unfortunately, it was a lot more involved than that. They ended up having to drain the tank, pull it out, clean out the sediment, replace the tank, then replace the, both the upper and lower elements on the tank. In this whole process, I'm not sure at what point with the current ordinance, I was supposed to have halted work and basically applied for a permit for them to do such. What I'm leading at is, a lot of times when there are replacements for HVAC systems, hot water heaters, et cetera, those are emergency issues. There is not time, basically, to stop the work, get a permit for it, and then try to reschedule those people to come back and replace, repair that, that item. So I'm obviously 100% in favor of this because I had a recent situation where officially I should have applied for a permit because they did pull the hot water heater and reinstalled it. But it was late on a Thursday after hours. I probably could have gotten that permit on Friday, but probably wouldn't have been able to get that crew out there until Monday or Tuesday to replace that water heater. Hence, five days, no hot water. Anyway, just some comments to say, I'm glad we're amending this. I can see, I understand the reasoning for this, but when it comes to replacement work, those are usually immediate needs. Those are emergency needs. And for us to require citizens to get permits, that could delay days on then being able to replace those items.
Would you like to comment on that?
If I could provide a little clarification, yeah, in our ordinances and in our frequently asked questions, or in our ordinances, not in our ordinances, in our codes, there is an emergency clause in there. In emergency situations, a permit is not required prior to the replacement of the equipment, but may be acquired, it says the next business day following the replacement. And obviously, if you've got bad weather, if you're not going to be able to get out on Friday, but those guys, you know, they get it fixed. We've done this in the past. You come in as soon as you can. We take care of the paperwork and the inspection in arrears.
Okay. I, I just wanted to throw that out there because it's a situation which I believe is common when people are needing replacement items. It's an emergency situation.
Absolutely.
Most people don't in advance schedule having to replace HVAC systems and hot water heaters. They usually spur the moment, uh-oh, there's a problem, I need this replaced.
Absolutely.
And I think that's probably one of the reasons why the building official made a special attempt to clarify this with, you know, a fact sheet that was posted and is posted on our website, and was also in our community newsletter that has gone out. So in an attempt to, you know, try to eliminate any of those types of misunderstandings. Anything else?
That's all.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman Ross.
So a couple of questions. First of all, good work, Ron. But a couple of things. One, the FAQ sheet is now inaccurate if this was to pass, so that needs to be updated all but immediately from a fee standpoint. The other thing, and I glanced at it, but I didn't look for that. Bob brings up a good point, and I want to ask this question now. If Bob's pulling out his hot water heater, replacing two elements, draining the tank and putting the tank, same tank back in?
Correct.
I don't believe that requires a permit. Would that be correct?
It's installation of a tank, so that would require a permit, correct?
It's not a replacement.
Yeah, the code says minor, uses the word minor in the code. I would say that if you're only replacing the elements, you know, that's one that's going to have to be determined. If you're completely pulling the water heater and doing this work, you're disconnecting electric, you're disconnecting plumbing, making repairs and putting it back. I, I would contend that a permit is required. Now, if you're only changing out elements, putting a new TP valve discharge pipe on, that's pretty minor. That wouldn't require a permit.
Yes, but in my, sorry, but in my situation, they pulled the house, they drained it and pulled it out of the house to clean the sediment, then reinstalled it, therefore they did cut off the electric. They did basically install a hot water heater.
Subject to interpretation, I would think that would require a permit because of total removal. Same way if, if you take a guardrail system completely off of a deck and put the same guardrail back on, you still have to get a permit. Once it's removed, it's no longer a legal nonconforming.
So to tag on to that, and I don't recall all the answers that are in the FAQs, but we talked at one point, and one of my original suggestions when this was brought up, it was, is that we do some type of, quote, "community outreach" so we can answer questions like this because there's so many unique situations. I perceive that as not because it was not a replacement of a hot water heater, okay? And whether it's your, you know, your, your plumbing contractors, your supply houses or whatever, it's not my decision, but order them some donuts and coffee and ask them to stop by at 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock, whatever is a good time, and get it out on the table and make sure that we've got this kind of stuff. Because that has been one of the challenges in this process, is has been, you know, all the different scenarios and, and some of the communication just hasn't, hasn't been as effective as we would have hoped. And it is what it is at this point, okay? So I would, I would suggest that we do something more than we normally have done, and we try to listen to our, quote, "customers," for lack of a better term, or the people that this affects, and see how we can clarify it and maybe even develop it further. Because this is an opportunity, again, to be seen as a resource and not a enforcer, okay? And that's all I have.
All right. Anyone else? If not, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross and Alderman Becker, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Second reading by title only of Ordinance Number 22 dot 11, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by Creating a New Section 109 dot 1D within Section 500 dot 020, Eliminating Inspection Fees for Repair or Replacement of Water Heaters and HVAC Systems, Rebating Any Fees Previously Paid Therefore, and Requiring a Report to the Board of Alderman About the Time Spent on Courtesy Inspections for These Systems Within the Year. Are there any additional questions from the Board? With none, is there a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Schuman, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, roll call, please.
Alderman Moros?
Yes.
Alderman Becker?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Schuman?
Yes.
All right, the second reading also passes. Our next item is requesting a first reading of Bill Number 22 dash 12, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Contract with Stockman Construction for the Autumn Lane Improvement Project for an Amount Not to Exceed $192,999. Assistant City Administrator, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and members of the Board. This project was bid out in February. The bid opening was on February 28. We did have four bidders for the Autumn Lane project. The low bid was Stockman Construction at a bid of 1,000, or $192,999. I'm sure the, the Board may remember, Stockman Construction most recently did work with the city on the Mace Road Phase 2 project, which came out very nice. So, so, so we've worked with this contract before, and we feel very comfortable with them. This project, the budget for this project was $155,500. As you may remember at the last Board Meeting, the Special Road District made it clear to the Board that, that the city would need to cover anything over the budgeted amount for this project. This project is over budget by?
25%?
$37,499. I believe that Gina has prepared a budget amendment which will follow this agenda item. So with that said, I do recommend approval.
All right, thank you. All right, any questions from the Board?
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Moros.
I, I just want to have some clarification of my own mind. I've driven on that road and all the way down around Shorty Pants. Are we talking about paving from Shorty Pants parking lot? Are we just talking about just the actual road that is paved already?
To city limits.
I'm sorry.
To the city limits, which does not go all the way to Shorty Pants.
The city limits is up to Three Seasons Road.
No, the other way.
It is not.
Okay. Let's start from the beginning then. Where are we, where are we talking about?
Dave, do you have a drawing that you can?
I've got my drawing. So if you were coming from Three Seasons Road and traveling down Autumn, where the pavement stops?
Right, where the pavement stops.
We'll begin paving there and continue down the gravel road to city limits. And that is approximately 500 feet. So from where the pavement stops now and becomes gravel, we're going to pave the next 500 feet of Autumn Lane.
So you ask if it would go all the way to?
But it's not.
But it's not because we don't have city limits all the way to the parking lot?
Okay.
So the gap between that parking lot and the city limits will still remain?
Okay.
I'd say 300 to 400 feet. What's the distance in your mind?
David, David said, I think, 500.
Oh, no, we're paving 500.
Oh.
Is that right?
We're paving 500 feet. I think here in the ballpark, there's several hundred feet of gravel left to get to the Shorty Pants parking lot.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. My other concern is, only because I've been getting a little bit of feedback from some residents that are there in Autumn Lane. They're concerned about people, because the road will be better, driving faster. They said you'd be amazed of how many people use that road going in and out to Shorty Pants and back up. And I guess I didn't know if there'd be possible either putting some speed bumps on that road, be a little proactive, or wait, I mean, you're shaking your head, no, I'd rather do something to try to avoid it rather than wait till things happen. But there are, there is, there's some disgruntlement among that neighborhood, concerned about how the people are going to be driving faster. And of course, there's also the parking problem, which always has been. But because it'll be a much better road, they can just foresee people driving faster.
Sorry, I was not shaking my head, no. I was simply looking over at Chief Davis because I thought he might be the better person to answer that question as far as the speed on that road.
When, when Phyllis and, Phyllis and I actually discussed this, and, and my comment to her and to, to talk to the chief, because then that's more of a traffic enforcement. I live off Mace, and when they paved and reconstructed Mace, it was like Highway 54 because it was all set a nice road. So between Public Works and the Police Department, we adjusted speeds, or they adjusted speeds, and did some other traffic control processes that really helped slow people down. So it is a concern. I've lived on a road that gets a nice new paved wide road, and people do tend to go a little faster. So then it ends up being more of an enforcement, how you, you know, slow, slow traffic down without bumping the road or doing things like that, so.
We'll put the radar trailer down there like we did on Mace Road, and then just a little bit of visibility and traffic enforcement education.
Okay.
We'll address it.
All right.
Mace Road has seemed to calm down quite a bit since the initial newness.
All right.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Alderman Rucker, did I see your hand up?
Yes. I noticed that there was indicated that the, you know, the increase was due to material. And I just will say that I took and did some addition and some checking on myself. Basically, the labor did go up a little bit, but the biggest chunk, it looked like, was the, was the site, the earthwork, which is, which is not material. But the material did go up like 20-some thousand, not near, you know, not near as much as, as the overall project did. Are you concerned that we're going to be looking at that with other projects? I mean, I didn't do a cross comparison with all the bids. I just did with Stockman and the, and the engineer's bid.
Yeah, I suspect that to be a trend that we see the rest of the year. You know, pricing from late last year to this time is probably up 25%, just in general what we're seeing. And that, that's a combination of material, labor, both, both sides of it. Obviously, there's lots of things going on with the economy right now. They're driving construction pricing up, and I expect it to be a contractor's market for the next 12 to 18 months, if not longer.
Any other questions, Alderman Rucker? Alderman Becker?
Do we have a written agreement with the Road District as to what they're going to pay and what we're going to pay? How, how does that work?
Yeah, yes.
Because I don't, I don't think the ordinance is clear as far as that goes.
Well, the ordinance won't be, but the, the Road District has voted commissions. So they have in their minutes, they're voted up to amount not to exceed that they go, go with the city. So that's what we go on, their official organized minutes where they vote just like we do as a board, or you guys do as a board.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, if there are none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Moros, do I have a, I mean, excuse me, Alderman Ross and Alderman Becker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. We move on to our next item, which is requesting a first reading of Bill Number 2213, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending Ordinance Number 2178, Adopting the 2022 Annual Operating Budget Transfer Funds for Necessary Expenses for the Autumn Lane Improvement Project. City Administrator, please.
Yes, Mayor and members of the Board. So just like you passed the first reading, this is the budget amendment that's tied directly to that, requesting to amend the line item that the road project goes in to add $37,500. Transportation Fund does have an estimated unrestricted balance. So in my opinion, I, I would move funds from appropriated already to other line items. I would just increase that line item, and in essence, it would come out of the unrestricted balances.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Now, Alderman Moros, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. We move on to our final item of discussion this evening regarding the mission statement modification. City Administrator?
Yes, Mayor and members of the Board. So as you recall, we met last month and discussed some of the modifications that was suggested from staff and some committee, some staff members that assisted in drafting modifications to our mission statement. And the top two that were discussed at that meeting are included. And then the request was to get suggestions from each of you, and we had two suggestions. And so those two, so you're back to four options to discuss. Obviously, modifying the mission statement is 100% at the Board's discretion. This was just something that was discussed at last, strategic planning. And so here we are, about ready to meet here in a few months for the next strategic planning session. But here's your four options. I'm just looking for direction or what you would like to do, if there's more, more things you want to look at before we bring it to the Board level in a official sheet that you can ratify.
All right, thank you. Input from the Board? Yes, Alderman Rucker?
A couple of comments. First of all, I guess I did a little more reading and delving into it than I did the first go-around. To me personally, this is not a big deal. That's personally. I don't put a lot of stock in mission statements. I don't, it, just not a big deal to me. I know some people, it's like, you know, it's, it's a big deal, you got to post it all over the place, but it's just not a big deal to me. So that being said, that being said, there it is. The mission statement we have, the more I read it, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think it's too bad at all. But if we want to make some changes, okay. I have a concern- I have a concern with item D. That sounds like a motto. That sounds like it's real short and sweet. And to me, I don't like something that's short and sweet. I like something a little more meaty if we're going to have it. So there's my words. I'm not going to dig my heels in on any of them. I don't have that much, it's not that big of a deal to me.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, anyone else like to comment? Anyone? Yes, Alderman Ross.
So I would just say that I think that a mission statement may be, I perceive it to be maybe more important than Kevin. It's where everything starts for the organization. What are we trying to accomplish? What do we stand for? What is our? We used to use this term in an organization I worked for, future back vision. What does it look like going forward, way out there? What do we want to be? Nothing wrong with any of them. I think that D was mine, so I'm going to be biased, to be quite honest. That was my suggestion, okay? But I think what it does do is it sets a tone for we want to be the best. And I think any tone less than that is not what I'm looking for. And, you know, the current mission statement, I think what I, and honestly, I have not had a chance in the last couple of weeks to look at it closely for many reasons, but in the end, it, there were some things around integrity and so forth that were in there. And I just felt like that should have been the price of admission. That shouldn't be what we're trying to accomplish is integrity. Some of these other things are okay. I think, I can tell you, an organization that I worked for for many years, when we came to a short, sweet and very clear mission statement as far as what we were trying to accomplish, it helped that organization become much more effective. And I could go into several stories on that. So again, whatever the board feels like, it's not what I'm trying to dig my heels on. But I think there's a way for us to set our standards extremely high and move toward that way. Not that we don't have some high standards already, but we may have set the bar even higher. That's all I got.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman Osteen.
I was leaning towards mission statement B mainly because it encompasses more of the employee environment. If we are trying to state that we want to be one of the best places to live and work, we need to give a little more information that not just work in the lake, but also work for the city. And in doing so, basically, we want to help those that want to come on board and work as part of the city to advance their careers, et cetera. That was the main verbiage that differentiated for me, which one I was leaning towards because, as you know, we've had a lot of issues with staffing and employee turnover, et cetera. And I liked that one basically specifically focused on our work environment as a city. That's all.
A lot of them incorporate the same terminology. They say the same thing. They just elaborate and build. And so that's a good point. That was actually one of the discussion items that I believe that we had as we talked about the mission statement, you know, in our strategic planning session. Anyone else?
I would just say, even though I indicated it's not a big deal to me, item number B was my one that I landed on.
Well, you know, if there's no further discussion, we have four items to consider, four proposals to consider. So I guess the question would be, you know, for staff to proceed, you know, we have to provide some type of direction. That direction is relatively simple at this point. Unless you want them to, you know, further work on the statement, you know, which they can, then I would suggest that what we do is come up with one of the four and make that decision and then vote on that as our mission statement for the city. So I think that I heard two people say that they were interested and thought that the item number B of the proposal was what they thought represented the mission statement that they wanted to see. I don't want to put anyone else on, you know, call out anyone else, but the reality is, I'd like to hear from the rest of you all if there's some other of the proposals that you're interested in. Let's throw them out and let's discuss them so that we can come to a conclusion and move staff forward. Yes, Alderman Schuman.
I've read through these several times and from the beginning, for some reason, I always picked item B as well. There's something about the flow of it. It flows very well. It felt very encompassing. Like you said, it kind of highlights different areas, talks about the support of the businesses because I do feel like the city does try and support all of our local businesses. And that's the one that I've picked from the beginning, too.
All right, anyone else that would like to provide information? Yes, Alderman Becker.
I agree. I was drawn on item B.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Maro.
I concur. Yeah, it's fine.
All right, well, it appears then that we kind of have a, almost a consensus of item B. So.
So move.
Well, what I'd like to.
This is really a discussion, you know. So what I'd like to do now that we have identified the one that we think best represents, you know, our city from a mission statement perspective, I'd like to have the city administrator bring this back.
Ratify the official.
Yeah.
With signature.
Right. And also, do we need to do anything else? But really, this is just, if there's nothing.
Put it on as a motion.
Just put it on as a motion for the next meeting? Okay? All right, all right, very good. I think that takes care of that. And I appreciate comments from each one of you as it relates to that. All right, now it's time to move on to communications. We always start from communications from the members of the board. So Alderman Ross.
I hope everybody enjoys some nice weather. I have nothing else at this time. Thanks.
All right, Alderman Maro.
You know, I don't really have anything other than, I just heard on the way over here tonight, and maybe you all did too, that I thought it was concerning, and I think it's worthwhile mentioning, that they mentioned on the radio that if any of you get any phone calls and saying it's from a mayor in UE and it's for a senior citizen discount, it's a scam. Do not honor it, even hang up. And because they're looking for a credit card to go ahead and this puts you down and this will go ahead and confirm your payment and da de da de da. So I just put that out there. I thought that was well, well needed to be repeated anyway. So Tyler, take note.
What are you saying?
Wow, okay. I'm glad I didn't single anybody out tonight. Anything else? Alderman Maro.
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, Alderman Osteen.
I just want to point out, you cannot get more Irish than an O apostrophe last name. So despite this appearance, I am part Irish. Thanks to my father. So Happy St. Patty's Day, everybody.
Thank you. Alderman Becker.
Along with the warm weather and Alderman Maro's barbs, I hope everybody enjoys some green beer tonight.
Alderman Schuman.
Just along with Happy St. Patty's Day to everybody. And I'm very looking forward to the next couple of weeks, the weather warming up, getting to take my kids out to the parks and doing the bicycles and teaching them that. So I'm very excited that we have some good parks in the area to take them to. So thank you for all your hard work on those.
All right, Alderman Rucker.
Yes, a couple of items. First of all, Tarek, could you see if you could get us an updated Sunshine Book? The one I have is 2017 is the last update that I have for my Sunshine Book. And I know that periodically, I think they update it every couple of years or. Every year or whatever. But could you maybe get some and share that with the board so that we can try to do our best to keep up with that?
No. Yes, I can. No, I have a whole bunch in my office, actually, that they put out every year. And then every time a new governor comes on, he puts one out. So I'll get you one.
The other item I have, and this might be a little bit lengthy. I didn't bring up the, any of this when we had the discussion in reference to the HVA and water heater issue because I didn't want to muddy the water. But I am very upset and concerned where we are at in this process. Let me give you a little history and bring you up to speed with where I'm coming from. As some of you may remember, I used to be in the fire service for a number of years. And during that time, not only was I fire chief down here in Lake, in the Lake area at Osage Beach, but I was fire chief up in St. Louis metropolitan area. One of the problems we experienced was the fact of codes and keeping codes up to date so that we can have the buildings built as safely as possible. And along with that, I experienced a situation where I was fire chief up in Eureka to where it was very difficult for the contractors because up in the metropolitan St. Louis area, there is a lot of cities, 92 to be exactly. And the poor contractor had to figure out what game, what rules he had to play by in each municipality. So there was an effort that was put forth back up there in the 90s or 80s, actually in the 80s, to try to get people to be on the same page of codes. Because what would happen was is every three years, the codes usually have a revision. And then some areas would update them and some wouldn't. When I came down to this area down here, I experienced the same situation that was going on down here in the Lake area. And to be very honest, spearheaded an effort through the Fire Prevention Bureau and the code enforcement people that, hey, let's all get on the same page. And there was an effort done and it was done and it was succeeding. There's a lot of value to that, to everybody being on the same page of codes. Number one, the contractor doesn't know where the city limits of Osage Beach is and where the city limits of Lake Ozark is. And they don't know where the city limits of Osage Beach is and the county is. And so they just are building these houses and building these things and they're trying to design. The architect may be up in St. Louis that's designing this building and he doesn't know specifically which one or where it is. And so there could be some issues there. And even if they do find out, then they got to find out that this area is under code, you know, 2016. And this one here is under code 2019 or whatever the different codes are. So it's very difficult and can create a problem. The other advantage to everybody being on the same page is these inspectors can share their knowledge. They can find out how each one is understanding and interpreting the codes because that's a big deal to interpretation of the code. And that way, if you run into a problem, such as the issue that was brought up right over here in reference to the hot water heater, would that be considered a permissible one or not? You know, it's an interpretation. Well, what can be done is these code people can kind of get together so that they're all on the same page so that everybody knows this. There was a lot of effort put forth to doing that. And I find now that we're not doing that. We are not in that situation. Now, some of that is the code enforcement people. I put some of the blame on them. And some of it is the elected officials. Now, I understand that right now we have a fire department that is a number of years behind, maybe back to 2013, 12? Okay, it has a 2012. Now, if that inspector can't get his board convinced of it, maybe we as elected officials, because I would be volunteering to do that without any doubt, to go speak to those elected officials and explain to them the value of everybody being on the same page. The other value there is to this is the fact that when every three years or every six years, I mean, even though the code comes every three years, it is pretty typical that a lot of agencies will wait every six years. That's not uncommon. But what they would do is they would all get these code enforcement people in a room together and they would say, okay, guys, here we are. We're all under 2012 code and we're going to change, we're going to all go up to the 2015 or the 2018. Let's start into it. And they start going through it and they start talking about these things and understanding and using each other for education. That's what the value of it is. So there's extreme amount of value, not talking about a litigation situation. If we are understanding the codes and we're doing it the right way, we don't have potential of litigation. So I could go on and on, a lot, lots more in detail of why it's of value. I assumed, and we know what that nasty word does, I assumed that this was still going on. And then we're not. Because what should have happened with the hot water heater stuff is that should have been something that these group of code enforcement people could have talked about. And Ron could have tried to convince them of why we need to permit. And if they all say no, that's okay, then Ron, I'm not saying that Osage Beach can't continue to do it, but that would be something that I would have expected Ron to come to us and say, okay, you know, everybody else in the lake doesn't want to do this. But we think, this is why I think we should do it. And that's okay. And I don't have any problem with that, with taking that action. So I would like to see us, if the board is in agreement, if not, okay. But if the board is in agreement, I would like to see us try to spearhead that back into putting everybody within the lake in the code or the majority of the people around the lake under the same code. I would volunteer from an elected official side, if you need help with other elected officials that need to be convinced of it, I'd be happy to go speak to their board on the value of it. And I think that it's, again, it's valuable and I think there's a lot of good for us to be under the same code. And it helps the contractors out tremendously. So whatever the other board members' thoughts on it, I would greatly appreciate that.
Other comments? Alderman Ross?
Well, I think it'd be great if we, everybody could agree in the, down here. I think that's one of the biggest challenges is everybody seems that many of the municipalities or government political subdivisions have their own thoughts about that. But I had someone that I would just say this was highly involved in the development around the area. We were talking about codes and he made the comment that basically he believes that the codes are part of the reason why a lot of things are going on in Osage Beach. And so I think there's value in those codes. Okay, I do. I support them. And, you know, if you want to spearhead, if there's some way I can help in some way, sure, I'd be glad to. If there's some person that I can help convince or so forth, that I think you might be pushing water uphill with some political subdivisions. But there's nothing wrong with taking a shot. But the more we all agree, the better off things are. I won't argue that a bit.
As we discussed, political subdivisions, we're not only talking about municipalities and counties. You're also talking about fire protection districts and so on. And probably others. Ron, anyone else that's just for example?
Just to touch on that a little bit, I was here when Kevin spearheaded the initial, what we call the Code Officials Meeting, which occurs on the last Tuesday of each month. And most, not all, obviously, you can't get all the guys together or ladies together every last Tuesday of each month. But we certainly try to have representation as often as we can. The fire districts, the cities, and we did go through the 2012 codes and we went in page by page. There were a lot of changes that were needing to be made and necessary amendments because of the requirement for residential sprinkler systems being forced into the body of the code. We had to make a lot of local adjustments. I can tell you that these same discussions were going on in 18 and 19 to update to the 18 codes between all of the jurisdictions. In 2020, as we all know, a lot of things happened that put the halt to a lot of the adoptions. I didn't want to wait any longer. We had already purchased our code books. We had already been through all of the meetings and made the amendments. So I proceeded, although albeit I was a year later than what we had originally anticipated, I proceeded to bring those codes to you guys to update to the 2018. It's my understanding that the surrounding jurisdictions are still in that process. It's just that they were delayed the same as we were delayed due to staffing issues, due to not wanting to bring on more change than what society was already dealing with, with the pandemic. So I'm confident that in six years, when we go to the next code, we will have that all back in order again, barring any unforeseen craziness. In saying that, thank you very much for the support. And if we do find, or if I find that other jurisdictions are struggling with any sort of support from their leaders, I'll be in touch.
Since you meet once a month, and again, like you said, not everyone is going to be able to attend. But over a period of time, possibly, you know, a quarter where you have three meetings and hopefully by that point, you would have had everyone, you know, had the opportunity to attend. If you could bring this up and share the concerns of our board and then see what kind of response you get and then maybe you could bring that back to us. And, you know, we've got two Aldermen that are more than happy to, you know, help participate with that. If those boards or the representatives of those entities feel like that that's something that they need some help on. something that, that they need some help on. Quite frankly, I think you may have hit the nail on the head, you know, Alderman Ross. There are going to be some of those that are going to be receptive and there are going to be those that aren't receptive, but that doesn't stop the process from at least attempting to move forward. If I could ask you to do that, Ron?
Yes, sir.
And then bring it, bring us up to date, maybe in three months. I think that would be plenty of time, you know, to take a look at this. Alderman Rucker, anything else?
That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. City administrator?
I have no update.
City attorney?
Nothing tonight.
City clerk?
No update.
Chief?
Nothing.
City planner?
Nothing for the group.
City treasurer?
I'm surprised you went a little slightly. The city's audit is.
Is it?
There you go.
Normally, in the first, about the first week of March, we would have all the documents and we would have auditors onsite doing field work. Post-COVID, it appears at this point that all of that field work is going to be done remotely. It's a little more challenging with communication. I don't foresee any delays at this point, but it's just a different, different process this year. So when you don't see, if you haven't, fellow staff hasn't seen people walking around and asking questions, it'll be done more through emails and things like that. So just wanted to let you know a little bit of a change.
They may not be onsite, but they're still working.
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Assistant city administrator?
I have nothing, sir.
Public works manager?
Nothing for the board, sir.
Building official?
Nothing, sir.
And Mr. Van Leer with Cochran Engineering?
Just a quick update on a few of your projects. We are working on getting the Mace Road Phase 2B project closed out. The majority of that construction was completed last fall. We're doing the final closeout now. So you should be seeing final payment on that project in the near future. We intend to present bids on the Industrial Drive project at your next board meeting. So you'll be seeing those, you know, your next board meeting. A week from today, we will be holding a bid opening for your two sidewalk projects that you're partnering with Osage Beach Special Road District on. So those bids will be coming in the near future also. Next projects on the front burner are the Greenwood Circle stormwater improvements. I would envision bringing those bids to the board in April. And then next project being the Bluff Drive shoulder improvements. So just kind of a snapshot of some of the projects you have going and what'll be coming to the board here over the next few months.
All right. John? Yes. Dave, does those sidewalk projects, does that also have that, the, the one area where we got the bump?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So Dave, I, I didn't hear Antioch in there. And it sounds like it's gotten pushed back for now maybe the sixth year. I'll just say it that way. So I'm curious why it's later in the cycle of developing projects versus those there? Would, there may be a good reason, but I'm curious what they are.
You know, just at the beginning of the year, we went over projects with staff and tried to come up with a order in which we were going to do these. I know we have been making contact with those property owners to gauge interest in connecting to the utilities. The, the plan is still to move forward with the project this year. There are multiple other projects that didn't discuss. That's just not.
Okay. Well, I just hope that as we learn to work even better in the future, that maybe we would talk, maybe somehow we make sure our priorities are similar. And I don't know about the rest of the board, but Antioch's been setting out there for a long time. And while other, some of these other projects are, how would I say, important, too. For example, Greenwood Circle, which I live on, I forget what that is. I'm sure it's a viable project, but I don't think it's near as important as getting some water and sewer to our residents on Antioch. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Anything else?
With that being said, maybe I would like to suggest that shortly after the budget or sometime during the budget or when the budget process is done, that, that we give a, a snapshot of the items and not necessarily dates to start with, but this is, this is what we're considering item one, two, three, four, and just to kind of help us, keep us all on the same page or something, Gina, you could kind of do it at budget next year.
Well, interesting you said that. The last two years is actually one of the first years that we haven't really published that estimated timeline just because of things being crazy. But part of their documents that they submit to me in front of the budget is the estimated timeline. Like what, so to share that with you guys to see if you, you know, what you like or don't like, we can definitely get back, back into that. One thing I want to say at Antioch, and I know we don't want to get in the weeds of it, but Mike and I have just recently been discussing that. And we do want it to go forward and we do want it to get done this year. So it's not that it's been a lower priority. The one issue that I'll just say without hopefully getting the weeds is that area is got, the users inside the city limits on the one side of the road, there's no issue they want it. But we have potential users that are on the other side of the road that's outside city limits. So that's a couple extra layers of some specifics and schematics that need to be worked out. And so that's really, and my instruction to Mike is, do not halt the project if the outside customers don't respond. We're not begging them. We're moving on to serve our inside. And that was the direction I had given Mike, so.
All right. Thank you for the clarity. All right. I am now requesting a motion to close the meeting as allowed by RSMO Section 610.021, legal actions, cause of actions or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorney. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Alderman Moros, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rucker, roll call please.[1768.62]